Before we start, as we always do, we were open by standing for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, Priority Carol, would you like to start?
Well, thank you very much, Commissioner. So it has been a really good busy week since last week. I know I kind of truncated my remarks because we had a very packed agenda last week, but I'll be a little lengthier today, but hopefully not more than a couple of minutes. So, last Wednesday I had the honor of attending the Francis Scott Key High School graduation ceremony at McDaniel College in Westminster along with Board of Education members, Vice President Tyra Bataglia, Steve Whistler, and Dr. Pat Dorsey, as well as Mayor Perry Jones and Councilwoman Laura Conway of Union Bridge, Mayor Neil Rup of New Windsor, and Tawny Town Mayor Christopher Miller, Councilwoman Diane Foster, and Councilman Chris Tillman. I offer my congratulations to the graduates and pray to God for the best for them in their future endeavors. Over the weekend, I was able to attend several events in Tawny Town, so I didn't have to travel too far. Friday morning, I had the pleasure of attending the monthly Tawny Town Business Breakfast at Thunderhead Bowl along with Mayor Christopher Miller, Councilman Chris Tillman, and Economic Development Director Jay Michie. The guest speakers were Heather Powell and Scott Singleton of the Carroll County Workforce Development. They are a wonderful resource and organization for anybody who's seeking a new job or to develop skills, or for any business that's looking to hire new employees. And of course, as I always do with my trips to the business breakfast, I bring home bacon for my dogs. Otherwise, they wouldn't let me back in the house. Saturday morning, I had the awesome opportunity to attend the grand opening of Restoration Cottage in Tawny Town, which is owned and operated by Karen Igglehart. I apologize if I'm pronouncing that last name wrong. Restoration Cottage offers relaxation services from acupuncture to emotional freedom techniques, tapping, and more. I also had the, and there's Restoration Cottage, anybody who's interested in it, it's right as you come through the circle in Tawny Town on the right-hand side. And I'm sure all of my fellow commissioners will probably need some relaxation techniques after dealing with me for the course of the meeting. Saturday, I also had the exciting chance to swing by the Tawny Town History Museum for their annual Hudson Day Car Show and Scavenger Hunt. The Scavenger Hunt runs in three phases through this November. In this picture, you can see myself, the mayor of Tawny Town, and City Manager Jim Weprick examining a beautiful Bentley clock, which was made in Tawny Town. The museum is definitely worth checking out, not only for the Scavenger Hunt, but for the museum itself, which currently has a seasonal exhibit that includes all kinds of Carroll County's agricultural history. Saturday afternoon, I had a wonderful time at the annual Wine Fest in Tawny Town at Memorial Park. Although I do not drink, the music, the food, the vendors, and the people who you run into are well worth the time. Among those I encountered were officers from the Tawny Town Police Department, the City Council, and some of our county workforce, including Director of Tourism Bonnie Staub. In this photo, the mayor and I are joined by Corporal Brian Schaefer and Patrolman First Class Aaron Leaks, both of whom are dedicated and stellar members of the Tawny Town Police Department. On Tuesday, I had the pleasure of attending the Special Olympics Torch Run Ceremony held over at McDaniel in Westminster and hosted by our own awesome Sheriff Jim DeWes. The Torch Run is an incredibly beautiful and important way for funds to be raised for the Special Olympics and supported not only by the Sheriff's Department, but supported by municipal law enforcement agencies as well. Tuesday afternoon, I had the pleasure of attending Carroll County Therapeutic Recreation Day along with Commissioners Rothstein and Kyler. Our Recreation and Parks Department hosted the event with our friends at the Farm Museum, and they estimate that we had over 300 people there in attendance, including those with special needs. I'll let Commissioner Kyler say a little bit more about the event, but I'll say that it's certainly emblematic of the heart of our county and that we recognize that every human life is handcrafted by God and that each life has worth and that between the Torch Run and therapeutic day, that demonstrates that we as a community do value all of our citizens. And there's Commissioner Rothstein with, I think that was a hawk. Last night, I had the privilege of attending the Flag Day Ceremony and Flag Retirement at the VFW 6918 in Harney, which partnered with the American Legion Hessen Snyder Post 120 of Tawny Town. I really was honored to be among our veterans, young Marines, Boy Scouts, and patriotic citizens who gather together to salute and pay tribute to our nation's flag. And I really do believe that we Americans have the most beautiful flag on the face of the earth, not only for what it looks like, but for everything that it means as well. And last but not least, while I was at Therapeutic Recreation Day, I came across an exhibit featuring Murray the Owl and his handler, Don Harry, from the Bear Branch Nature Center. Extraordinarily, I broke the language barrier with the Wild Animal Kingdom by conversing with Murray, and this was our conversation. Chris, if you could put that one up. Chris, did you get the one with the speech balloons? Well, if not, no worries. Oh, you did not? No worries. Can you pull that up, and at the end of Priority Carol, can you throw that up? I don't want to spoil the conversation. And just as one, no, thank you. And just as one, I'm sorry?
I never got that.
Oh, it's on my Commissioner Facebook page. You can come back around to it at the end of Priority Carol, that's okay. But the very last thing, I will, we do want to compliment Chris because I know he scrambles a lot of the time to keep up with us. We have a lot of expectations and demands that we put on him, and so, Chris, thank you for what you do. And until that picture shows up later, Commissioner, I'm set. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gordon?
Thank you. Obviously, to echo Commissioner Vigliotti's comments, it's been a very busy week, to say the least. Just a couple of quick highlights from mine. Friday, I was at the Westminster Pool Ribbon Cutting for the new pool that's now open in the city of Westminster. There's a splash pad and a smaller pool that will be opening next season, but they do have the main pool open for this season. Both myself, Delegate Tomlinson, Senator West, and Senator Reedy were in attendance with the entire mayor, the mayor and common council for that event. Incredible-looking pool. I think the original pool was there for about 40 years, so a very significant upgrade from the previous one. So I think that'll do wonders for the community, and I think a lot of people are going to appreciate the new swimming pool. Monday evening, I was at the Westminster City Council Meeting. The Ellsworth, Historic Ellsworth Cemetery was annexed in roughly 129 years after the land was purchased. This was a long-term project that definitely took a community to accomplish, included the Community Foundation of Carroll County, as well as a wide array of people, including Diane Betcher, Tom Gruel, Kelly Schaefer-Miller assisted with that, CLSI Survey, the mayor, common council, Richard Turner. And I was also somewhat involved in this a few years ago. I had asked the city to consider this as, this property has been one that historically has sort of had its ups and downs over the years with how it was being handled and anything from vandalism to just not being maintained. This cemetery has a lot of significance to it, and with it being annexed into the city of Westminster, it will now allow it to receive various grants to assist in the long-term care and ability for it to exist for future generations. And I think it was just a great testament to the community as a whole that we could kind of come together for a purpose of this type, and you know, I think these kind of moments are great, and I look forward to seeing what we may all come up with in the future. On Tuesday, with Commissioner Vigliotti, Commissioner Kyler, and Commissioner Rothstein, I was at the law enforcement torch run for Special Olympics. There's the gentleman with the torch who was carrying it. It looked like something that was quite significant to carry while lit through the entire run, the race, I think it was a mile and a half long here in Carroll County. And then yesterday, I was at the Flag Day Event at the Farm Museum, so it was the Flag Day and Flag Retirement Ceremony. It was good to see all the scouts and everybody turn out, and there were quite a few flags that were retired and were done in a very respectful and positive manner. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Gordon?
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Kyler. So I will try to be brief because I know we're a little behind schedule. For those who pay attention to what's going on within Carroll County government and their commissioners, and I hope you are, you've probably picked up on a couple themes with all of us. For me personally, I operate on fairly basic guidelines. If something's good for Carroll County, if I feel like it enhances the people that live here, I feel it makes their life better, I'll support it. But if I feel like it's something that hurts Carroll County, harms Carroll County, I will oppose it. I will make no apologies for that. Solar is one of those issues that I think some of us have been very clear about. A lot of the Maryland state mandated requirements coming down from a very left-wing General Assembly, particularly those that are going to hinder, I feel, and not make better for sure, our education system in this county, I will oppose those. And there's another topic that people really need to educate themselves on that's about to happen, and it is the legalization of, the legal sale of recreational marijuana, which is going to take place in Maryland on July 1st. I'm going to steal a couple lines from Kevin Sabat, who is the president of Smart Approaches to Marijuana. He's a former three-term White House Drug Policy Advisor, and he's a junk professor at Yale University. But he tells us that the marijuana industry, which spent millions to lobby elected officials in bankroll legalization reform campaigns, is following the playbook pioneered by Big Tobacco. They recognize the road to big profits run through the heaviest users, and such they have increased potency of the drug more than four times since 1998. As usage rates, potency, and addiction have increased, the adverse effects have also increased. The supporters of legalization like to downplay the risks of marijuana. The drug caused more than 70,000 individuals younger than 18 to have marijuana-related emergency department visits in 2021 alone. We all want what is best for our children. Yet, the growth of the pot industry has provided kids with greater access to a drug that medical science links to psychosis, depression, suicide, and lower EQ at a time when the brain is still developing. Regular users are nearly five times more likely to develop a psychotic disorder, and users of high potency marijuana are four times more likely than users of low potency products to become addicted. More young people are becoming addicted to marijuana. It is sending more of them to the hospital. More of them are using a more potent form of the drug. It is past time our nation reversed course and advanced drug policies that protect our children rather than allow them to be collateral damage for another Big Tobacco. I bring this up because there are a lot of elected officials in this state, and perhaps some in this county, that are being very disingenuous about this issue. They love to point to the referendum that took place in the state that voted to legalize marijuana. They look to the General Assembly that codified the legalization of the sale. That is not what I am discussing right now. I am discussing whether we are going to approve or disapprove of the sale of it in Carroll County. I hope residents join me in my opposition to this. If people want to buy marijuana after July 1st, they can probably find it someplace else. We all know what's actually going to happen to the industry, and we've already seen it happen in Colorado and New York and other states where there is no legal recreational sale industry because it gets undermined by people who decide they can automatically do it illegally because if you're caught with it, you're not going to go to jail. So we know what's going to happen. Elected officials in Maryland completely chose to ignore all the other states that have failed. But as this issue goes forward, I want to make sure people understand the distinction. I understand there was a referendum and it was overwhelmingly approved. I personally voted against it, but that's the way it went. This is not about whether we're going to ban the use of it in Carroll County. This is about whether we want to sell it in Carroll County. And at a time coming out of post-COVID, with educational, all the numbers are lower. Parents are struggling. I've got three teenagers myself. I get it. It's hard, and we're going to make it harder by allowing this to happen in Carroll County. I know there are legal concerns moving forward, but I'll go back to what I said earlier. If I think something's bad for Carroll County, I will oppose it, and I will not make excuses for that, and I will not make apologies. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll try to be quick. As the other commissioners said, it's been a busy week, and I need to say, because I was told that I didn't last meeting. I love Carroll County, and I love the events we get to see. I stopped down to join farewell for Linda Eisenberg, and great crowd. I've left several things, and I've always wondered, and I'm sure not the case with you. They were there celebrating what you've done for Carroll County and all the times you've been here. They were not celebrating the fact that you're leaving now, correct? They were not celebrating the fact that you're leaving now, correct? I attended part of the racial justice conference at Carroll Community College last Friday. I had some other things I had to do back here, so I was not there for all of it. But great crowd, great people. As usual, the Community College does some great things. On Saturday, I attended the American Legion Post 200 luau in Hampstead. And just a great event. Great to see people out there, veterans and sons of veterans and, and the ladies of auxiliary and, and just a great event. We discussed in-house Route 91 project, the detours. And, and most people, I think, have seen it. But hopefully, by the end of the year, the project's going to start down there to rebuild, repair two bridges, replace. Probably a 10-month process. They said, the state says they have incentives involved in the contract. And they don't want to swear that it won't take more than 10 months, but that's their plan. The concern, of course, is people are smart. They're not going to drive down to 795 and back to go a half a mile out, out the road. So, they're going to use county roads. And I just want to assure everybody, the Department of Public Works is looking at it. They've coordinated with the state on some local road signs, local traffic only road signs. And it, and it's, like a lot of things that Carroll County does, it, it's not totally simple. Some of the roads start in Bonnaroo County and then become Carroll County roads. So, it's coordination with Bonnaroo County. Of course, it's coordination with, with MDOT, with the state. But it, it is being discussed. It is ongoing. And we fully understand there are some county roads that people are going to be exceeding the speed limit to get to or from work that ought to probably be one-way roads. They're, they're, they're small county roads based on the residents that live there. But there's going to be others on it, and we're working on it. Did, did the torch run ceremony? And I think that's been mentioned well. The Therapy and Recreation Day. Again, I just want to thank the Farm Museum and Wreckin' Parks for all they do, including that. Our board had a joint meeting with Emergents, Emergency Service Advisory Council. That went great. And it was some great discussion. And there's a lot of things going on and a lot of things changing in Carroll County with fire and EMS. And, and they're a big part of it. I had on here, because I wrote this ahead of time, that I went to a celebration honoring Jeff Daggett's. I did not make it, and I want to apologize. But it's, it's, I was in here the whole time. I also was going to attend a lunch to celebrate our school superintendent. Superintendent McCabe is now Dr. McCabe. And she tells me, hopefully not totally seriously, "Don't look at me that way. I can't write prescriptions." But I am Dr. McCabe, and that's one of the names I go by. So, congratulations to them. And congratulations on Jeff Daggett's getting ready to start a different chapter of his life. And I apologize, I didn't get to see either one of you. Last night, Rhonda and I went to the Orioles game in Bonnaroo. Unfortunately, they did not win. But Camden Yard's always a great place to be. And my, my son, and I feel softer about it than my wife, but he left us and moved to Denver. He had season tickets for the Orioles. So, we told him we saw no reason for him to continue having season tickets for the Orioles and, and other family members and us go. I, I met a, a couple ladies there. And the, the gentleman that took the picture is a college student who actually attended Carroll Christian. They're both from Anarundale County. But if you'll notice, the one between Rhonda and myself, she's carrying a bag. They didn't want to let her in with that bag because of the clear bag policy. And that's how we met. We were harassing her about where did she steal the bag? And she would stand there and, and it's, security's tough every place. But guys would go by with a bag three, three times the size of hers. And she would tell the security people, "He could hide a horse in that bag, but he's allowed in, but I can't be." And, and we had some fun with that. So, a great evening there. And then lastly, as you all are aware, Commissioner Rothstein is not here for the meeting today. He's representing us today and tomorrow, representing us in Carroll County pretty well. As I've learned in six months, fortunately, their staff here are more wise than I. I had plans because I really miss him, and I'm sure you guys miss him too. We had a mannequin for the, his seat. We had a blow-up clown. And people kept telling me, probably that wasn't the right way to do a meeting. So, just if he's, if he's going to watch this, we miss him here. But we all behaved. This is World Elder Abuse Awareness Day. And we have a proclamation for that. But prior to the proclamation, I think we have the Bureau Chief and Program Manager, Gina Valentine and Gail Gannon here for Aging and Disabilities and Long-Term Care. Would you guys like to come up to the table and tell us a little bit about yourself and about this day? And, and then Commissioner Vigliotti is going to honor you with a proclamation.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you. Good morning. Gina Valentine, Bureau Chief for Aging and Disabilities. With me is Gail Gannon, our Program Manager, excuse me, for the Long-Term Care Embudsman Program. We also have some of our partners today joining us. Dean Brewer and one of his team members from the State's Attorney's Office, Carroll County State's Attorney's Office, and Michelle Jacobs, who's the Supervisor of Adult Protective Services with, in Carroll County Department of Social Services, and some of her team members as well. I just want to say a few things this morning, and then I'll pass it to Gail. Approximately 1 in 10 Americans age 60-plus have experienced some form of elder abuse. Some estimates, excuse me, range as high as 5 million older adults who are abused every year. Unfortunately, studies conclude that only 1 in 24 of those cases are actually reported to authorities. And I just want to share a short story with you as to why it's so important for us to be aware that elder abuse actually exists and occurs. And that if we see something or suspect something, we need to say something. One of our guardianship clients, prior to being placed under guardianship, was financially exploited by the manager of a facility that he lived in. And thankfully, due to the hard work of the Carroll County State's Attorney's Office and our partners at Adult Protective Services, that individual was convicted just a couple of weeks ago. But he stole over $50,000 from our client. And the facility had been shut down for multiple reasons. But because of his money being stolen, he could have become homeless. And this gentleman's in his 80s. He does have cognitive deficits as well. But thankfully, due to the goodwill of another assisted living facility in this county, he was able to remain housed. And so, hopefully, he'll be able to recoup those monies that were stolen from him. So, that's just one example. It really hits home for us because we've known this client for years before he even became our guardianship client. But of course, glad that it's been a positive outcome for him. So, I just want to turn it over to Gail to share some information about some events that have occurred this week to recognize elder abuse.
Thank you, Gina. Yes, it's a pleasure to be here with you this morning and tell you about what we just finished this week in honor of World Elder Abuse Awareness Day with our partners from the State's Attorney's Office and Adult Protective Services. We had programs on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday of this week. Monday at Carroll Vista in Tawney Town, Tuesday at the Mount Airy Senior Center, and just yesterday at the South Carroll Senior Center. We presented a program where Dean Brewer gave a presentation instructing participants how to protect themselves against frauds and scams. Also, the registrar of wills, Paul Zimmerman, rather, he accompanied us as well. And local attorneys spoke about how some thoughtful advanced planning can help protect older adults from misuse of their assets. And then we had Michelle Jacobs and her team from Department of Social Services and Adult Protective Services talk about other types of abuse that can afflict older adults in the community. Also, Mary Jane Overby from the Carroll County Bureau of Aging and Disabilities spoke about the caregiver support program. Because sometimes untrained and unsupported caregivers can unintentionally find themselves in situations where the person they're caring for suffers from neglect. So, we try and prevent that by providing as much caregiver support as possible. And then lastly, I spoke as a long-term care embudsman about abuse and neglect in the long-term care setting and the embudsman role in preventing that. And the program was attended by over 120 people throughout the county. So, we were very pleased with that attendance.
And if our partners would like to say a few words, if that's okay? We'd like to invite them to the mic. Dean or Michelle?
Good morning, Commissioners. So, these events that we had this week, we worked so well together. I mean, everything flowed so smoothly and all. And I just want to give a shout out to, to Gail for all of her hard work in putting this together because the events went very well. But this is something that, you know, I still preach that we're 30 years behind on how to look out for our vulnerable adults out here in, in the community, whether it be abuse, neglect, or whether it be through some other means, financial exploitation. So, I just ask that, you know, the citizens out there, you know, pay attention to this, pay attention to your neighbors, watch out for one another. And again, if you see something, you know, report it right away. And it's important that we get involved at the early stages of this. And, and I just, I'm learning of a new case that just is happening now where an elderly woman, she is very well and has her faculty about her. And, but she's being exploited already with over $5,000. So, this is happening on a daily basis in our community. And 5,000 is one of the lower numbers we're seeing. We're seeing people that are being scammed as much as $200,000 out of their bank accounts. So, it's not something that we can just kind of stick our head in the sand about. We have to know that this is happening in our community to be able to break the cycle. So, it's real important. So, I thank you all for the proclamation that's about to be presented. Thank you.
Good morning. I just wanted to say, we are just so happy to be able to get out in the community and, and give information about elder abuse awareness because a lot of people don't know what, you know, what it is and what we do. So, my staff works very hard every day. And I just wanted to give you just a few numbers. We are out in the community investigating. And the last fiscal year, we investigated 131 Adult Protective Services cases, people in the county either being abused, neglected, or exploited. And we're providing respite to caregivers in the, in the community, in the county, and we are managing guardianships. So, we're out, we're protecting, we're working with our partners, and we're just very happy to be recognized. And thank you.
Mr. Vigliotti?
Thank you, Commissioner Kyler. Proclamation, World Elder Abuse Awareness Day, June 15, 2023. Whereas, June 15, 2023 marks the 17th Annual World Elder Abuse Awareness Day, which was established in 2006 to promote a better understanding and awareness of the social and economic impact of abuse and neglect of older persons. And all older adults deserve to be treated with dignity and respect and deserve opportunities to engage as vital participating members of our community. And more than 46,000 adults over the age of 60 called Carroll County their home in 2020. And this number is expected to exceed 55,000 by 2025. And it is estimated that as many as 1 in 10 older Americans are abused or neglected each year, and only 1 in 24 elder abuse cases are ever reported. And financial fraud is estimated to cost older Americans about $3 billion annually, with the average loss per incident estimated at $120,000, according to the AARP Public Policy Institute. And ageism, poor health, and social isolation are major contributors to elder abuse and exploitation. And the Carroll County Bureau of Aging and Disabilities and its network of partners are committed to creating an age-friendly community where social structures exist that allow older adults to retain societal connections, thereby reducing the likelihood of abuse, neglect, and exploitation. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Carroll County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim June 15, 2023 as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day in Carroll County and urge all of our communities to recognize and celebrate older adults and their ongoing contributions to the success and vitality of our country and our county. Adopted this 15th day of June 2023, signed the entire Board of Carroll County Commissioners.
And thank you for everything you guys do. And can we ask one more thing? Can everybody with you come up front? And we'll come down and we'll do a group photo as Mr. Vigliotti hands you the proclamation. And, and again, just thank you so much.
Mr. Kyler, can you stand on the chair?
I, I am an elder.
All right, right here, please.
Now, do you, do you, people, it's not just ladies, do you want your photographer in a picture?
Tim, do you want to get a picture?
No, no. This is one thing that I would love to be involved in, but I'm not involved in. I support Dean and everybody up here. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for what you do and seeing you. Maybe, maybe we can just like skip dinner and go like cruise around on a golf course.
See you, guys.
We'll skip the business part of the meeting.
Okay. Item number one on the agenda, public hearing with public comments for the 2023 triennial update to the water and sewer master plan. And as they come up, can you just explain the process we've gone through and how it will continue?
Sure. So, with this process, this, this is a public hearing sort of closing in on the culmination of, of the process. The plan was written. It was by county staff and with the input from all the eight municipalities. And, and then it went to the Planning Commission for their review and comment. Came here for a briefing a week or two ago. And now it's back here. You gave it authorization to go to the public hearing at that time. And now it's back here for the public hearing. So, we're going to hear briefly from staff, overview of where we stand. And then if there are any public comments, they'll have three minutes to make that comment.
And, and the only decision being made today is to close the public hearing and, and keep the record open for 10 days?
Right.
Now, Chris, is anybody on the line?
I do have a caller. I have not had the opportunity to find out if they're calling about this specific item, but I would assume that this is a public hearing, that's what they're calling.
Okay. Do you want, and I think...
So, we have a presentation to give just to recap. So, I think maybe public comment would be better after, maybe the presentation?
And that's what I was going to ask. Would you rather they, they do their comment now or hear your presentation first? So, so we'll hold public comment until after your presentation?
And since this is a public hearing, how do we want to swear people in?
We don't swear in public hearings.
Okay.
Not for public hearings. That's for, that's for judicial proceedings.
Okay. I thought we, okay. So, good morning, Commissioners. I have with me today Price Wagner, who put together the Water and Sewer Master Plans Triennial Update. He worked with all municipalities that have their own systems, which all do, to submit their information. And then we submit the information for the county. We certify it with all their planning commissions, including our planning commissions, with all the information. And also, I just want to say, as you know, today's my last day before you. And I want to say thank you all for all of your support. It's been wonderful being here for the last 10 years and serving this body and the citizens of Carroll County. And I couldn't have done it without my amazing staff. So, it's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Linda, for what you've done for us and helping us transition in as a new board. And then thank you for your patience with us above all.
Absolutely. All right. And so, with that, I'm going to, Price, just kind of refresh you on what today's public hearing is about.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you.
Morning.
As Linda said, this is the public hearing for the Water and Sewer Master Plan Triennial Update. We did post in the Carroll County Times on June 1st, as well as June 8th. And this is the actual description that was in the Carroll County Times, stating that the public, what the public hearing's about and the ways to get in contact and send in information, as well as to review the plan itself, as well as the maps. So, again, briefly, this is a state mandated document that is updated every three years. The last... The last time it was updated was in 2019, even though the process started in 2017. There's a couple of hiccups that happened that it was finalized and the state adopted it, it approved, I'm sorry, in 2019. The county updates this document for all the municipalities' systems, as well as the county-owned systems, which are the Freedom Water and Sewer and the Hampstead Sewer. And again, for any project to be permitted by the Maryland Department of the Environment, it needs to be listed within the Water and Sewer Master Plan. So if the development site plan comes in, and it is shown outside the water and sewer service area, however they want to connect, they will not be able to connect, because they're not part of this plan. What has changed, mainly, some boundaries of all the maps have been adjusted as results of contradiction, contradiction, sorry, contractions of the designated growth areas in the Freedom Community Comprehensive Plan, as well as updated maps to reflect annexations and master plan updates for Hampstead, Manchester, Mount Airy, and Tawny Town, as well as Westminster. And again, Westminster's pilot study has, for their water reuse program, has completed, and they are moving forward with a 1 million total recapture of effluent. Whereas previously, in the amendment we did this past fall, yes, I believe it was fall, sorry, this past fall, we had 500,000 gallons in priority and 500,000 gallons in future. With the pilot program complete, they want to put all 1 million gallons into the priority portion of the water service area. And again, all the amendments to the 2019 Water and Sewer Master Plan are included in this. Again, meetings were held with all the towns and cities. We had multiple conversations back and forth for them to review what was provided to us to make sure we were under, had the same understanding and had it in the way they required and perceived. And properties in the long-range planning, which is 10-plus years, are not counted towards estimated demand. They're shown on a map, but towards estimated demand, they are not a part of that. Again, all the planning commissions for municipal areas have certified, we received Mount Aries on Monday, so all planning commissions have certified consistency with their current plans, their current master plans. The Carroll County Planning Commission certified consistency with the Freedom Plan, as well as the Carroll County Master Plan. And again, on the 25th of May, I briefed this county commission to request for a public hearing. So again, planned service, water and sewer service areas, as you'll see, there are eight municipal service areas, with the Freedom area as the ninth. And the biggest changes for pretty much all the maps are indicating and including areas that were now, that were either in priority and are now fully built out, and are now part of the existing service area. Hampstead, the big change, there's no major changes. Again, just looking at the maps and updating them per the town's requests and verifying that what is now being served is accurate and correct. Same thing with the city of Man, town of Manchester, Mount Airy, we've updated their maps to show what areas that either are going to be in hopefully future planning, or areas that the town perceives as, or not perceives, but the town does consider as existing now. And a lot of those changes were mostly the parks that they have. They requested, you know, to show the parks as existing service areas, and that pretty much is adding, you know, not adding, but considers one or a couple, one or two bathrooms. And those numbers are already captured as in the existing service area or present-year numbers, so we're not actually adding anything to the system. We're just now recognizing on a map what is being served. And as you may see, some of the areas do have a relatively large, long-range. One of the recommendations that we made to these areas are potentially look at and maybe reduce the long-range service areas, because you want to be able to have the capacity to serve. And especially if it's outside of your growth area, sometimes it may be a little bit harder to potentially serve. But we definitely would, you know, if there's no plan at this point in time, reduce the long-range, if at all possible, to, even though these numbers are not being estimated at this time, with the knowledge we have and with what we see, the potential of adding a great demand is there. And this is one where you can see the small area in Union Bridge, down here at the new community solar, or the solar facility that went in place. This was the farm that was, that was a part of that whole big piece that was then annexed out, and there's a current house and tenant house on there that they requested to be brought into the service area, and that amendment went forward last year. And we talked about the consistency with the Carroll County Master Plan and Freedom Plans, as well as all of the town plans. And you'll see, there's 15 different, or 15, there's six goals. Communication between the cities and the county. Protect and enhance the water quality of Carroll County's rivers and streams. To the extent feasible, provide adequate and appropriate CIP community investment plans to support the future extension of facilities and services. Protect certain mineral resources of current and future economic importance. Facilitate a development pattern that remains consistent with the fabric of our communities and to pursue the policies that facilitate development in appropriate areas, including designated growth areas, priority funding areas, and those types, those aspects. So Table 15 and 32, these are the present-year numbers, which were updated, provided to us by the town, by the towns, the providers. These, for water, is what is pumped out of the wells total, and for sewer is what is the flow that is going into the plants. And then we base our priority planning and our future planning numbers on the buildable land inventory numbers that we have, to what the potential future demand could be, estimated demands could be. And every three years, it's a recalibration, that whatever is in priority planning comes into play, is now considered part of the present year. And what we have been seeing is the actuals, the numbers are less. The amount of usage is not as much as what the state mandates us use. For residential, it's 250 gallons per unit, and for commercial industrial, for commercial it's 700 gallons per buildable acre, and for industrial, it is 800 gallons per buildable So again, next steps, today's the public hearing. I'll be back in front of you on June the 29th for discussion, decision, and hopefully adoption of this as a resolution to forward to the Maryland Department of the Environment for their final approval. And we will forward this to the Maryland Department of the Environment for final approval. And this plan does not become effective until MDE gives their final approval. So the current 2019 plan stays in effect until the MDE gives their final approval, which sometime could take two, three, four months, depending on, they've already seen a draft aspect of it, so they have a good working knowledge of it. So we're, we're working with what comments they've provided, and then forwarding this to them for their final review and hopeful final approval. So this is the directed amendment of motion.
Commissioners, any questions, comments?
Just, could you email us this presentation? Because on the printout, some of that writing is incredibly, incredibly small. Motion to...
Public comment.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, any...
Is there anyone here who wanted to make public comment on this? Chris, do you still have someone on the line?
Yes, sir. If the callers can unmute themselves by using star six, that's limited, and please identify your caller card today.
Hello?
Yes.
Hey, hi. Hello? Hello? Okay, sorry, I wasn't sure if I was coming through or not. Hello, my name is Kristen Morelli, I'm an environmental engineer consultant. And I have some comments concerning the public sewer in the Freedom area that's contained in the triennial plan. Most of the homes around here are on septic systems, which are expected to last 20 to 30 years. Most people don't realize they have an issue until they try to sell their home or until something more drastic happens, such as sewage backing up in there. Many homes here, the septic systems are already beyond their expected lifespan, so they may be failing and people don't realize it. As a homeowner with a septic system, I understand it's my responsibility to maintain and replace my system as necessary, but the fact that we're in a designated growth area means that we typically have smaller lots, and closer property boundary lines, and this area also has a higher water table. These are three factors that many of the residents in the rest of the county don't experience when they have to replace a septic tank. Because of these factors, upgraded systems become necessary due to new regulations that have been put into place over the past 20 to 30 years. So instead of $5,000 to $10,000 to replace a standard septic system, people are getting estimates of $40,000 to $50,000. People don't have this amount of money available to replace a septic system on hand, and if the system fails, it's often an emergency and must be taken care of immediately. I've spoken to several people in the area who have had failed septic systems and that require these upgraded lots. A man told me his system failed because of the high water table, and he's now in the process of getting $40,000 quotes. He's worried about his property values and the potential of having to pay for another system in 30 years. One woman told me their septic system backed up into their basement, and they had to move it from their home for several months until the grant was able to be applied for them to get a new system. Her neighbor's system also failed, and they had to install one of the upgraded systems. Another one of her neighbor's systems failed years ago, but they don't have money to fix it, so they've ignored the problem. And the woman told me that there's human excrement and the water flowing through the culvert by her house. Septic systems have the potential to impact the area's groundwater. The woman I previously mentioned buys bottled water for her family to drink. I wouldn't want to drink groundwater from an area with septic system contamination, but I'm afraid that's what we're dealing with in the future if the public sewer isn't available in the Freedom area. I've worked on a mediation project for homes with contaminated groundwater, and the people's property values plummeted, because no one wants to buy a house with unsuitable, undrinkable groundwater. The public sewer capacity needs to be reserved for areas that will need it in the near future. Waiting until there's an emergency doesn't allow people the ability to connect. This is not, extending this to new development is not in the best interest of the people living in Carroll County. That's for sure. This issue doesn't even affect me directly, other than the possible groundwater contamination, because I'm on a large enough lot that it won't affect me, but it bothers me that it will affect, it could affect my neighbors, and it could affect the other residents here. It's creating a health risk for the community due to the risk for potential groundwater The county should allocate this limited infrastructure to existing communities before extending it to new development. Leaving individual homeowners to bear this burden when the county could step in to help the citizens now is not good planning for the interests of the community or for the environment. And I hope that you consider the citizens already living in the Freedom area. I know we're in a designated growth area, but, you know, some of us, that's the only place we could live due to our jobs and our commute time, and this is infrastructure that should be provided in a designated growth area. I mean, we're on smaller lots, we have lots to neighbors, but sometimes it seems like we don't get the things that should be provided in such an area. We're missing a lot of the infrastructure, and public sewers should definitely be extended so you can protect all of our groundwater supply. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Record open for a period of 10 days.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'd also like to...
Yes, while we have you here.
...you're leaving too. We wanted to let, we wanted to see how you did before we...
Oh, thanks.
Yeah, so you passed.
Yay.
Tough crowd this morning. Now, we have a certificate of recognition. This certificate is awarded to Linda D. Eisenberg in recognition of nearly 10 distinguished years of service to Carroll County government. You exemplify the highest standard of performance and commitment in executing the vast responsibilities in your role as chief bureau of planning and director of, director of planning. Your leadership was evident in many areas, including being instrumental in leading Carroll to achieve the highest census, it was what, 2002, response rate in the state of Maryland, serving as chairperson and empowered representative of the BRTB, and accomplishing the Carroll Master Plan of 2014, Freedom Master Plan of 2018, and comprehensive rezoning and text amendment process. For your dedication to the Carroll County community, the Commissioners wholeheartedly thank you and wish you the very best for the future, signed the entire Board of Carroll County Commissioners.
Thank you so much. It really means a tremendous amount. Thank you.
And we're going to do a photo?
Yeah.
I think we should.
Thank you so much. Sure.
Thank you. Congratulations, Linda.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
We've got to be busy the last six weeks.
Yeah, it's all good. That's what we do. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a systems management maintenance renewal from Technology Services.
Good morning.
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Department of Technology Services requests your approval to award the Case Systems Management Maintenance Renewal Contract for the next three years to DLT Solutions in the amount of $46,928.57. This amount is within the adopted fiscal year 23 budget, and no additional fund should be necessary.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. Good morning. This is, this is a system that Technology Services has used for a number of years to manage the inventory of all of our client computers. You know, we can check warranty status, we can, it gives us a lot of information as to what that machine is doing at any given time, so we can push software out to it, install software systems on it, check warranty status. It's been a very beneficial tool to our department. So this, this particular $46,000 request is to extend the maintenance for three years. When we receive quotes for both one and multiple years, we did receive a discount for that multi-year renewal, so we're requesting to go with that, since we plan to use it for the foreseeable future.
Any questions?
Motion to approve the Case Systems Management Maintenance Renewal Contract to DLT Solutions in the amount of $46,928.57.
Second. So I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? The next item, also Technology Services, a public network maintenance contract.
All right. The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Department of Technology Services requests your approval to award the annual maintenance and support renewal for the Carroll County Public Network Edge Devices to Skyline Technologies Solutions in the amount of $84,192.49. This maintenance and support are being purchased via a county competitively bid contract, 49F-118/19, which Skyline was then awarded a term contract. This amount is approved in the fiscal year budget, and no additional fund should be required.
So this is for the, for the support on all of the devices that we have at all of our CCPN locations, so that's county government, schools, the community college, everywhere there's a county fiber presence. Skyline has been monitoring this and maintaining this equipment for us for 24/7, for basically the entire existence of the fiber network. So this is, again, just continuing that, that contract with them.
And, and since Commissioner Rothstein's not here, I need to emphasize, no additional fund should be required. He would want that, he would want that said. Commissioners, any questions, comments? Commissioners, any questions, comments, motion?
Motion to approve the Carroll County Public Network Maintenance Contract purchased to Skyline Technology Solutions in the amount of $84,192.49.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Now, Chris, is there any other public comments?
No, sir.
Okay, so we'll move into admin open. Is there any other discussion from commissioners or comments?
Good job, Mr. President.
So far, now, now we just need to please Wanda Hill.
Good morning, Wanda, how are you?
Good morning.
Hi, Wanda.
Okay, and chime in if you see any changes. Monday, June 19th, the county offices are closed for observance of Juneteenth. Tuesday, Commissioner Gordon, Kyler, and Rothstein will be at Exploration Commons for Commissioner Gordon's Chamber of Commerce breakfast. At 9:00 AM, the Planning and Zoning Commission with Commissioner Gordon, which that'll probably be tight for you.
Oh, it's going to be an interesting morning.
2:00 PM is the Veterans Advisory Meeting, and Commissioner Gordon and Kyler attend that. On Wednesday at 5:00 PM, Board of Trustees meeting with the Carroll Community College. Thursday, 8:00 AM, closed admin, 9:00 AM, open. First item on the agenda is Board of Education Budget Adjustments. Second item, actuarial services from Human Resources. Third item, update on Local Management Board Community Partnership with Citizen Services. The next item, requesting approval for, to add Fiscal Recovery Fund Interest Income to the project budget. The next item, a Maryland Facade Improvement Program Grant. The next item, purchase of body armor for Carroll County Sheriff's Office. Next item, Generation 911 Continued Improvement. Next item, purchase installation of a diesel generator. We're going to be busy. Next item, approval and award of a contract to Murphy &amp; Didn't Hoffer for Family Shelter Space. Next item, Northern Landfront Transfer Station Floor Replacement. Next item, walkway lighting at Carroll County Farm Museum. Next item, Otterdale Mill Road Bridge Repair. Next item, public, I'm sorry, request for approval of a grant adjustment in Pawnee Run Water Shed Plan. The next item is the Royal Legacy Program Option to Purchase Property. The next item is an option to purchase additional properties. And that's it for Thursday. And on Friday is the Family Summer Fest at Freedom Park, which Commissioner Rothstein's attended. Saturday's open, Sunday is Commissioner Garren's podcast. Anything on that week? Everything look good? On the following week, Monday is open, Tuesday is open, Wednesday is Planning and Zoning Commissioner, Commissioner Gordon, and at 7:00 PM is Emergency Service Advisory Council with Commissioner Garren. On Thursday, again, closed admin, and at 9:00 AM, Parks and Rec Proclamation for Priority Carroll. And a proposed ordinance amending Chapter 94 with Wreck and Parks, and then Water and Sewer Update that we just looked at. Freedom District Water Treatment Plant, Inspection Services on Maryland 851. And then there's a work session, Agricultural Zone Ordinance is the last item. Friday's open, Saturday is a Sykesville Let Freedom Ring Parade with Commissioner Rothstein, and that's Commissioner Rothstein's week to do the podcast. Any changes, additions, deletions? We do okay? Thank you. And so I need a motion to adjourn, and it's simple, we're not going into anything else, it's a motion to adjourn.
So move...
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.